Okay, it is Tuesday, 7th of July at 2015 at 7:02. I would call the regular Board of Trustees meeting to order. And short indication we have, Father, we pray that as we, as a nation, become a people of prayer, both acknowledging that our blessings come only from you and praying your will to be done in our country and in our village. We thank you. Amen. Roll call, please.
Trustee Head, Jackson, Nelson?
Here.
Brian Burgland?
Here.
Pike?
Here.
Stanifer?
Here.
President Wecken?
Here.
Trustee Zappa?
Here.
Thank you, Melissa. Next is review of approved minutes of regular board meeting of 2 June.
I'll move to approve the minutes from the regular board meeting, June 2nd, 2015.
Thank you, Colleen, is there a second?
Second, Stan.
Thank you. Any discussion, meaning amendments or corrections? All in favor of the meeting minutes being approved as written, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Comments from the floor? This is an opportunity for residents to make the board aware of topics, issues, opportunities, either on or not on today's agenda. Doesn't look like we have any of those. So, next item is number four. We have the Hudson Co-op presentation and discussion. Don, would you take the podium and name and explain what the Hudson Grocery Co-op is about, please?
I will do. Thank you very much for this opportunity to come tonight. I'm Don Patrick. I serve as the president of the Board of the Hudson Grocery Cooperative. So, tonight I want to give you a little background to where we've come from, our current status, and a timeline moving forward as we look at where the co-op's gonna head. The background is simple enough. We lacked a grocery store in downtown Hudson about 10 years ago. When I was born and raised in Hudson, but moved away and came back about 10, 11 years ago. And there was a grocery store downtown, but then it closed, and there's a health and fitness place there now. And so, a lot of friends and neighbors thought we need to get a grocery, you know, downtown. And we hit on the idea of doing a grocery cooperative. And some neighborhood friends had the idea in 2011, and we incorporated in May of 2012 to go down the road of opening a grocery cooperative in the community. And we're guided by the seven cooperative principles, and we work closely with a couple consulting groups that organize and develop cooperatives and support grocery cooperatives. Our current status, we are over 300 owner strong, and each owner purchased stock in our company, and the stock purchase is $80. And they buy a common and preferred stock. And that gives them right to have access and vote, and vote our board in, and they'll have say and control over what we do as we, as we move forward as the cooperative. Over 10% of our owners are North Hudson, they have North Hudson addresses, went through that spreadsheet. So, they either live in North Hudson proper, or the town of Hudson aligning or around your community. The recent, this 300 owners was a recent milestone for us. It was a benchmark that once we reached 300 owners, we would enter into a market study by a professional that does natural food cooperative market studies nationwide. And so, we've just entered into that contract with this individual to come out and do a market study to see the viability of a grocery cooperative in the community. Because of the ownership and what they desired at the time, we actually selected two sites in Hudson and two sites in North Hudson for the market study to come out, look at the site, look at all the parameters around that, and tell us, you know, what that means and the viability of a grocery cooperative in our communities. And so, two locations with two sites each. Obviously, those are sites available now. When ready to build, they may not be available, but at least we'll have the market study. We're looking at the market study to be complete by early fall, for sure by our annual owner meeting in November. We have it every November. So, we'll have the results of that, you know, as we go into the fall. We're excited about that. We've done a number of events. We're in a big owner drive. We've actually done our, we had an owner drive at Seasons Tavern. We did our annual meeting at Seasons Tavern. We did, recently in early spring, we did an owner drive at Stone Tap. And our next owner event and owner drive is at the Postmark Grill on July 28th. It's 7 o'clock, I believe. But look at that, we do have a website, HudsonGroceryCoop, one word, dot com, dot org, apologize. And we're on Twitter, Facebook. We publish a newsletter called The Beat, which comes out periodically. Get on that, get on our listservs to find out more information about where we're going. Next major milestone we're shooting for is 600 owners. At 600 owners, that should trigger, if all goes well in the market study and everything comes out well, it should trigger us looking at space and looking at location, as well as hiring a general manager at that point as we move forward. So, that's where we're at. Told I had a few minutes, so I think I hit it, but if there's any questions?
No, the, I think the event at Postmark, the 6:30 is a mixer, 7:00 is a meeting.
Okay, thank you.
And I was at the one in February when we signed up, and yeah, the meetings are very short. It's an opportunity to get to know some of the other owners, and it, you know, it'd be nice, you know, I mean, and obviously, I'm gonna lobby heavily for North Hudson because we really need a grocery store up here and stuff. But, and I honestly believe, you know, they don't like driving on the hill, they'll come this way, you know, so it would be good for everybody involved.
You know, down in the lower town. You know, at the owner meetings as well, we have a PowerPoint that we present, we answer questions, we give a lot of information about cooperatives, the philosophies that drive cooperatives, you know, a lot more information, a lot of good questions. The last one at Stone Tap, there were owners there as well as, you know, soon-to-be owners asking really good questions. And there's a lot of people out there, well, you know, there's no brick and mortar. What does that mean? How does that work? How does my investment? It's a place to get those questions answered as well as we move forward.
Excellent.
So.
Thank you. Any of the board? Anybody have questions? Thank you, Don.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay. Item number five is Resolution 2015-06, Department of Natural Resources Review of Compliance Maintenance Annual Report, C-MAR, you know, approval requested. This is something we do every year, and I'll make the resolution since it's, you know, I'll be signing it. Resolution reviewing compliance maintenance report resolved that the Village of North Hudson informs the Department of Natural Resources that the following actions were taken by the Village of North Hudson Board of Trustees, whereas the Village Board of Trustees has reviewed the compliance maintenance annual report, which is attached to this resolution dated this 7th day of July, 2015.
Second, Stan.
Thank you, Mark. Is there any questions or challenges to the report?
Mr. President, I'm only curious, normally a resolution is a therefore. This seems to have an unresolved paragraph. What is it that we're doing? I mean, I understand what we're doing, but the resolution does not specify that, just whereas, therefore.
I suppose you could substitute the whereas as therefore, and say, because what, basically what they want you to do is review, say that you reviewed it.
I understand.
And I know what you're getting at, but...
Looking at the format, which seems awkward.
For a solution, I was offering that we could change it to therefore, the Village Board of Trustees has reviewed the compliance maintenance report. And then, maybe Melissa could add whereas.
Well, I'm confused, because whereas the Village Board has reviewed, I don't know where that, how that would be confusing to what we're doing, which is, oh, all right, so therefore, we, be it resolved. I mean, there's, all right, some semantics, so we rewrite it?
If no one, if everyone else is fine with this, I...
Why don't you just retitle it, Stan, Resolution to Review the Compliance Maintenance Report. It's resolved that we're gonna inform the Department of Natural Resources, and whereas the Village Board has reviewed the compliance annual, compliance maintenance annual report. So, I think in the title is maybe misleading, Resolution Reviewing Compliance Report. I just give you, to me, if you want that to be more specific, but it seems to be just a matter of semantics.
Yeah, we'll modify the language, therefore, that the Village Board of Trustees has reviewed, and adopt this resolution. That be satisfactory, Joe?
Absolutely.
Okay. Melissa, you good with that? Okay. All in favor of the resolution, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay. Number six is amended Class B, or Perrin B slash Perrin Class B liquor license for extended premises, Cozy Corner. A is the seventh annual grand opening.
Stan, can I move to approve the June 23rd, 2015 Cozy Corner request for extended premises with the following conditions? Number one, area outside of building to completely enclosed with fence, and the extended premises accessed only from within the building. Two, use of alcohol shall remain within building or fenced in area per the establishment's liquor license. Three, use of outside area only with specific permission of Village Board for requested date and times. Four, owner to provide equal amount of adjacent substitute off-street parking or parking lot is fenced during time of event. Five, owner to be responsible for band slash music volume. Six, all outside music to end no later than 10:00 PM.
Thank you, Mark. Second, Colleen? Thank you. Any discussion or comments? All in favor of the motion, signify as saying aye?
Right before that, Mr. President, Stan, I have to sustain for this vote.
Thank you, Kirk. Kirk, is it a contention? All in favor, signify as saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And B?
Stan, can I move to approve the, what date is that next one? They're both June 23rd? Or is this just when they were approved? The item B, request for extended premises, number four, I'm sorry. Have to review with the, these conditions again. Number one, area outside of building to completely, to be completely enclosed with fence, and the extended premises accessed only from within the building. Two, use of alcohol shall remain within building or fenced in area per the establishment's liquor license. Three, use of outside area only with specific permission of Village Board for requested date and times. Four, again, owner to provide equal amount of adjacent substitute off-street parking or parking lot is fenced during time of event. Five, owner to be responsible for band slash music volume. Six, all outside music to end no later than 10:00 PM.
Thank you, Mark. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Colleen. Kirk, I'm assuming you will abstain again? And any discussion or questions from the board? Hearing none, all in favor, signal as saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Who carries? Next is amended Class Perrin B slash Class, or Perrin Class B liquor license for extended premises, Village Inn.
Stan, can I move to approve the request for extended premises, number one and two, for the Village Inn with the following conditions? Number one, area outside of building to completely, to be completely enclosed with secure fencing to be accessed only from near the main entrance area of the building. Use of alcohol shall remain within building or fenced in area. Number two, use of outside area only with specific permission of Village Board for each particular date and time. Three, owner to provide equal amount of adjacent substitute off-street parking or parking lot area is fenced during time of event. Maintain the no parking alley between the Village Inn and Zappa Brothers for emergency vehicle and Village Public Works traffic during the event. Four, owner to be responsible for band slash music volume, and outside music to end no later than 10:00 PM.
Thank you, Mark. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Colleen. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the Village Inn extended premises permit, signify as saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Everyone is in. Okay, number eight, temporary Class Perrin B slash Class, or Perrin Class B alcohol license, North Hudson Pepper Festival, Inc.
Stan, can I move to approve the temporary Class B fermented malt beverages and Class B intoxicating liquor license for North Hudson Pepper Festival, Inc. with an effective date of August 13th through August 17th, 2015, as recommended by the Village Board?
Thank you, Mark. Is there a second?
Do you mean Village Clerk?
Second.
Or Village Clerk, I'm sorry, as recommended by the Village Clerk, thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Discussion? Pepper Festival's only a month, a little over a month away, so. Okay, everybody in favor, signal for saying aye? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, public hearing, special assessment for street improvements along Lemon Street North between St. Croix Street North and Monroe Street North. And at this time, I would open the public hearing. Okay, you're not here for the public hearing on Lemon Street?
Yeah, I'm here, just listening.
Okay, well, let's see, we've opened the hearing, and there are public comments. I think, Kevin, would you give us a little, just, you know, make some comments, help the folks understand what we got going on and...
So, this is, if you remember, the Village Board approved adding in the Lemon Street project with the other projects that we're gonna be doing this year, hence with the improvements, with the current assessment policy, the Village will special assess those folks. There's four parcels that are gonna be affected. As part of the improvements, it's just a street resurfacing project. With the current assessment policy, 50% is gonna be picked up by the residents, with 50% being by the Village North Hudson. So, then, there was a report that was put together, and copy was given to the property owners along with the public hearing notice for tonight. So, I'll just go over this quickly. Again, it's just a street resurfacing, it's just gonna be 50% of the street, street work's gonna be assessed. Since the street is over 20 years old, there is no pro-rata reduction with this. The current pace of rating is around a five, so there's definitely a need to have the street re, to redone. The existing utilities, the sewer and the water in that area is not gonna be replaced, just the street itself. So, based on what we came up with, projected cost for the project, we estimate it to be $20,250. And that should be a fairly comfortable number since we have bid the project out, so we do have, you know, the unit prices. We do have, you know, a little bit of a contingency factor in there, just because, you know, the project limits might go a little bit more than what we were anticipating originally. So, basically, based on that, well, half of the cost, $10,125, will be assessed. So, when you look at page number six, which is the assessment district, you can see, you know, the four different parcels that'll be, they're looking to be assessed. Page number seven is, you know, the cost estimate that goes along with it, Schedule B. And then, Schedule C, which is on page eight, gives you a breakdown of the individual parcels. Some of them being, you know, there's two lots that are on corner lots. One of them was previously assessed with the Monroe Street project, so you're gonna see where they're zeroed out, because the short side has already been assessed with that particular project a number of years back. You know, along the side that's on Lemon Street, the first 150 feet is forgiving, and what they have right now is 130, so that, that cost would actually be picked up by the Village. And you'll see that down on the bottom, where we have two lot credits with 140.2 feet. There's the third one down, again, that's another corner lot. The short side is assessed, which is gonna be on Monroe Street, and that's only 140 feet. The corner lot, which is along Lemon Street, it's under 150 feet, so that one's gonna be forgiven with any future improvements. Then, when you get down to the very last one, you can see we have total frontage is 139.7, but when we did the 2002 project, we actually did some street improvements into that lot already, so that's why you're seeing, you know, a reduction of not the total frontage, just because we did some of the work back in 2002 with the St. Croix and Helen Street project. So, you look far off on the right-hand side, they vary, you know, from a low of around $1,900 up to $2,800 for proposed assessments. So, then, when you go back and look at page number four, based on those numbers, they will have the option to pay in installments, with the low one being 1,800, so they would have five years to pay those assessments if they wish to do that option. Up to the 2,800, which would be six years, so it amounts to around $400, $450, depending on where you rely in the table. And there is, there is a financial charge if they do decide to go with, with that option. And in the past, the Village has charged 1.5% greater than what they have borrowed the funds for. Or you have the option of paying it off right away, so it doesn't go on your tax roll.
Okay, and the board, any questions? Sure. Okay, thank you, Governor.
Thank you.
Okay, so if there is no questions from the public, and there's no questions from the board, I'd like to consider the public hearing closed, and possible, actually, we need a motion to...
Approve the Engineers' Report?
Engineers' Report, and commence with the project.
Stan, I'll move to approve the Engineers' Report.
Thank you, Mark. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Colleen. Further discussion? Daryl, Kirk, anything? Good. Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve the Engineers' Report and approve the special assessment, and this is an assessment, so Kirk?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, unanimous, and new street coming. I hope everything is satisfactory. It'll be nice. Okay, next, new business from the board or staff, President's comments. I hope everyone had a safe and happy 4th of July, or Independence Day, and other than that, hope you enjoy the month of July. Summer is fleeting, and the sun is heading south, so towards Daryl's favorite season, or it's a little cooler. So, that's all I have. Gloria?
No comments at this time.
Okay. Uh, Madam Clerk?
Nothing.
Okay. Okay, so, thank you. So, Plan Commission did not meet, I believe. Personnel and Finance did meet, and we have a claims approval. Motion.
Right here, just a second. Stan, can I move to approve the June 2015 non-reoccurring claims of $45,751.04?
Thank you, Mark. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Colleen. Is there any discussion on spending for the month? Hearing none, and suspending issue? Brian?
Yes.
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 Yes?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. And that ends Finance for now, and Personnel. Next is Public Works Committee Recommendations Chair update. Chair is not here for Public Works. Let's see, who was here? Brian, or Derek? No, Daryl was gone. Brian, you got any updates from the Public Works, or we just proceed on to the...
Mostly budget, wasn't it?
Two issues that are...
Yeah, there's two issues coming.
Okay. All right, so, item B is crack filling bids, approval requested.
Stan, can I move to have Scott Construction, Inc., crack fill 32 streets listed on the proposal at a not, at a cost not to exceed $18,555?
Second.
Thank you, Colleen. $18,550, I think is the...
Did I say 55?
55, yeah, threw an extra nickel in there, and that's...
I'm too much reading.
Dear money.
Sorry.
But, okay, is there any discussion or comments on the crack filling?
I would like to make one comment, that it, that number is, if I can't say it, I certainly can't do the math, but our current budget for crack filling is $25,000, so it's considerably lower than what was budgeted.
Thank you, Mark. It is, that's a, you know, significant savings this time, so that's a good thing, because we struggled in the past years in order to be able to do crack filling and stuff with the way budgets go and stuff, so. All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, and is a pending issue? Kirk?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. And now, hot patching.
Stan, can I move to have Farner Asphalt Sealers hot patch the 27 areas of streets listed on the proposal at a cost not to exceed $14,000?
Thank you, Mark. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Colleen. Any discussion?
That is currently $1,000 less than the amount budgeted.
Thank you again, Mark. Any other discussion?
Yeah, next year, can we make sure we get two votes on this? I know Mark tried, but...
We can try.
Is it really that hard to get two? Farner came in high on the other bid, that's why I'm wondering.
Yeah, no, we always, Mark?
I put out about six packets, have requested from contractors each year, and so, those fellows have been trying to patch it for us, or gave us bids for patching in the past, and for some reason, we got one bid down.
I'm guessing it's because everybody's pretty busy.
Busy. That's what it sounded like when we were...
I think we can, in that regard, we can only use what we get for a response.
And we also did have a guy who paid for it.
Oh. Okay.
Yeah, and it's the same group with crack filling, we're extremely higher than the other ones, so that just kind of proves, I think, that they had plenty to do, and they're bidding it up, so they get it or don't get it. No?
I wouldn't read too much into it, I just, it, right now, we had one bidder for work that has to be done, and in our area, there's not much more you can do other than not do it this year, and rebid it next year, hopefully get more bidders.
No, and we have, it's under bid, for budget, it's under the budget, so.
Yeah, yeah, I know, but it's, it's not, this is fairly typical.
Okay. So that's another spending, Brian?
Yes.
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 Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Public safety?
We have no actionable items for the board this month.
Thank you, Mark. Public welfare, Colleen?
Public welfare did not meet and neither did Park Board.
Okay, thank you. Park Board did not either?
No.
Sweet.
I know I could just hug her.
Oh, that's very good. So just for everyone, the next two items are convenient to close session because it's dealing with personnel and or employment issues and policy stuff, so.
We'll, we'll need a motion and seconded.
Okay, so can we have a motion to go into?
I'll move to go in a closed session.
Second.
Thank you.
I think technically that needs to be read so that.
Need to read the, okay.
The reason for it.
The reason for the closed session, convenient to close session per Statute nineteen dot eighty-five, parent one, parent C to consider employment, promotion, compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility regarding employee memorandum of understanding, parent MOU, for benefits and compensations. And then second, part of it will be convenient to close session per Statute nineteen point eight five one C to consider employment, promotion, compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility regarding administrative staff. So we had a motion and a second to go into closed session. All in favor?
We need a roll call.
Oh, roll call? Kirk?
Yes.
Daryl?
Yes.
Stan, yes. Mark?
Yes.
Yes.
Brian? We are now in closed session. Thank you, Kevin. Mark?